We got our break since we want to close. All right, I'll now bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council to order, and the first item is adoption received with agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Long, Counselor Davis, seconds. All those in favor. Pose carried. We have adoption of minutes. There's three of them here. Can I have a motion for all three? Counselor Davis, second by Counselor Arneson. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor. Thank you. And now motion to resolve into special closed.
To move.
Counselor Long, second by Counselor Davis. Counselor Richter.
Two personnel, one liability.
Two personnel, one. One legal, one sorry, one legal?
Yeah, one legal, one liability.
Liability, okay, is that not legal? Okay. So two legal, basically, okay. Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Pose carried. Now going to close. Thank you. So we will get started. Way too much laughter going on over there. All right, so now we'll reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council. There are no presentations. Next item are delegations. E1 is Carol Paulson with the Langley Sustainable Agriculture Foundation. And welcome here. I see Mr. Melanchuk is accompanying you. So as you know, it's five minutes.
Oh.
And you don't have to lean into it. It'll pick your.
Okay. How's that?
No, you don't need to lean into it. It picks up your voice. You can just stand naturally.
That's good.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council, and thanks for the opportunity of being here tonight to share with you our final report on the Langley Ecological Services Initiative. In your package, you probably have our full report. Tonight, we're going to have a power presentation to summarize some of the key points.
Just for the record, introduce yourself.
Okay.
And so that's in the record. Thank you.
Dave Melanchuk, and I live in the Brookswood area. Have for 40 years, thereabouts.
Thank you.
The Langley Ecological Services Initiative, from there, I'll just call it L E S I, so we can speed up the process, that we have quite a few things we'd like to cover. So just a little bit of acknowledgement before I get started. Over the last four years, there's been a lot of cooperation on this project from Township of Langley, your staff, Jason Chu has been instrumental, providing this guidance and help as we moved along. All our directors on LSAF have been involved, particularly Carol's put the packages together, and other directors, and mainly the farmers who participated in the project. We'd like to acknowledge them for all their cooperation and help over the years. Now, in terms of the background, the basis of this LSI project is the Langley Sustainable Agricultural Study, and on section 2.4.7, it indicates one of the action items was to undertake a pilot project to support the principles of the Ecological Services Initiative. In December 2015, LSAF signed a contribution agreement with the township to implement the project over a three-year period, and the project was extended by one year by council's approval because the funds were available, and there was some sort of additional work we'd like to do with our demonstration sites, and also communication with senior governments on a couple important issues, on the water quality issue and the species at risk. Now, in terms of the pilot, the map indicates the farms that who participated in the program. There's 11 of them, and they all started at slightly different times. The bulk started shortly after the township submitted an advertisement for people to enroll. So you have a variety of commodities, variety of sizes, but they're all on Bertrand Creek. Now, some of the results, I'd like to first say in summarizing, every farm and every farmer is different, and each one has their own particular challenges and opportunities. But some of the key features we found over the four years that invasive weeds, erosion, are two of the major challenges to the health of the riparian area along Bertrand Creek. And another important finding is that intervention makes a difference in the riparian health. We had two demonstration sites dealing with particular invasive weeds control and riparian planting, and in those examples where there was actual intervention, there was improvement in the riparian health. The other farms, the riparian health, basically either stayed the same from day one to the year one to year four, and basically, the reason is without intervention, these invasive species are very, very difficult to control. If you kind of leave them alone, they start to take over. So that affects the riparian health. So that was an interesting finding of the project. If you want to make changes, you have to be active. The total cost of the four projects was $93,067, and at the end of this, we have a surplus of approximately $21,000. Now, an important event or initiative was the community survey, which the township required us to do, and that was done by the Mustel Group, and we're asking questions, or they asked the questions, and they did a representative sample of the urban and rural folks, of what they felt and what their issues. Overwhelming, I won't go over the details. Red lights means one minute?
Thirty-two seconds.
Oh, my goodness. I knew I'd have this problem. Anyways, in general speaking, the survey said the community does support it initiative, and they're prepared to pay. There's a limit to what they're prepared to pay. About 70% said they would pay up to $10, and beyond that, there was a lower and lower agreement to pay. One of the important things in that question, they felt it was important that the senior governments cooperated with the future of the program. Our recommendations, we're recommending a transition year between the end of four and starting up again, and during that time, we think it's important to develop a dialogue with senior governments to see where they are and they're prepared to support. We're suggesting establishment of a fund based upon a $10 per parcel levy, starting in 2021, obviously, and suggesting if it proceeds to have an equity with the other watersheds participate in Langley, because they're very important from a fisheries and ecological perspective. And we should, we recommend establishing advisory committee over the next year to iron out the details of the future. And finally, we're recommending that the surplus funds of $21,000 be transferred to a special fund to provide the seed money to start a Langley learning farm. So in summary, the recommendations, they're similar to what I just mentioned. We recommend council direct staff to create a permanent, ongoing ecological service program to enhance agriculture and compensate farmers for protection of the environment. I establish a sustainable funding for the ESI through a parcel levy in 2021, a $10 per parcel, and authorize the transfer of the residual funds we have today to the establishment of the Langley Learning Farm at the Double Bay area.
Thank you. Got some questions here. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, and thank you very much. I know I did the farm two or a couple of years ago, or three years ago now, when you had took us through it to look at all the improvements that were being made down there. Now, you say 70% in the survey agreed to pay the $10 per levy fee, and how many people responded to the survey?
The survey, the total number of people they surveyed was 200, and it was split between people living in the rural area and people living in the urban area.
Okay. So this $10 per parcel levy, is that intended on all TOL properties, or only those properties on rivers and streams?
It's intended for everyone, because I guess the philosophy is that everybody benefits from clean air, clean water, and all the values associated with species at risk.
Okay. So if all TOL properties are going to pay this levy, do we have any idea how much it's going to raise?
Apparently, there are something like 40,000 separate legal parcels, we understand, in that range in the Township of Langley, if you count large, small lots in the town. I believe it's in that range. I don't have the exact number, but information we receive, yes.
And would we have to hire staff in order to run this program?
Well, that's one of our findings in the report, is that for these last four years, it's been basically run by volunteers from our foundation, although we did hire people for specific actions, like doing the demonstrations of weed control and LPS to do some planting. But in terms of looking afterwards, basically volunteer, and to tell you the truth, we get kind of burnt out as volunteers, and my assessment is that with strictly volunteers, you cannot really achieve the full benefits of a program such as this. And that's probably why we didn't get as much active intervention of all the properties, because you can only get around to so many to encourage this encouragement and the dialogue and development relationship and education and extension. I think it's important, if you're really going to make a difference into the riparian health along these streams, and if it gets expanded. Bertrand Creek is only one of six important watersheds. If you take it like the Salmon River watershed, it is huge, much larger, much more parcels. So if you really want to make a difference, I think you have to basically have a contractor or staff person from the township to actually, that would be their job to really implement it and do the outreach. I don't know if I answered your question, but...
Exactly. So my last question is, what kind of a participation rate could we expect out of people that live along the river? Like, would people be willing to participate in this project, or is it only going to be limited to farms?
Well, that's a really good question. One of the things we grappled with, and I think we mentioned in the report, some farms or some properties along Bertrand Creek might have wanted to participate, but we had our commitment to the township to have at least 10, and when you only have 10, you kind of pick the ones with larger parcels or whatever. But there are small operations, particularly in the horse industry, that are not classified farm from the B C Assessment Authority, so they drop off. I would think that if there was a larger program, we'd, those criteria need to be reexamined, because you could have a small parcel that might be on the river, might be critical, but it really is not a farm, but has some issues and opportunities for improving riparian. So I think that's what we're suggesting in the transition year, to examine criteria, how to best implement it, how to get the best bang for your dollar. So the pilot, there's just kind of a learning stage to help the future, if the future is positive in this way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Thank you very much for coming out. Dave, you're an expert on the environmental farm plans, and now you're an expert on this, but you're not an expert on talking too fast. Anyhow, I'm teasing you. I've always teased you about that. Riparian health, when you talk about riparian health, you're not just talking about creeks. It's other pieces of property. They don't even have to be farms. They can be a piece of property, like you mentioned, there's 40,000 small farms, and that's like 86% or something. But so erosion and soil, soil erosion and weeds are something that I see all the time, especially the last three or four weeks. Last, we've seen some really heavy washouts in the roads and all that sort of stuff. And that will take soil to the lowest part, and it'll flush it into the extremes. When you talk $10 a parcel, that you want to maybe put that out as a question or a levy, that's what taxpayers will pay. But can I just, can you just, I don't know if you have the figures or not, but as a farmer or a landowner, because it's not just a farmer that maybe have a piece of property, somebody's got a piece of property and it's got blackberries, and they're the worst for soil erosion and weeds and all that. So what would, what would the contract look like? So you, we extend this, and I fully support we do, but we extend this, what does, excuse me, what does David Davis get? What happens on our farm? Donkey?
Sorry?
Well, he's being cheeky.
Okay, no, this is let Mr. Melanchuk answer the question.
We grappled with exactly that question. We had a flat rate for everybody during the pilot, no matter, because there's some big parcels, like 120 acres, and some 10-acre parcels. So I think what you have to look at the criteria, if you're talking about how much to contribute to that participant in the program, you need to look at what values can that property bring to the overall health of the river? Now, it might be a small parcel, but it may be critical, like for, it might have spawning, because one of the things on the species at risk that Nuxac Dace, it's a very small fish, and it spawns on these gravel beds. So you could have a critical property where in a stretch of two years, two miles, you only may have 100 meters that's critical for that spawning. So that would be very valuable in terms of the agreement with the program. The farmer has to show initiative and agree to work together to improve that particular habitat. And then how much money they should be paid, I think has to be revisited. We started with a flat rate, and I think it's got to be more sophisticated than that to say, well, exactly what are you as a landowner contributing to the health? So it'd be kind of case by case, just about, and this is why I think reflects Counselor Richter's question, who can do that? And that means a professional person, not me, because I'm retiring, a professional person's got the skills to say, well, that's really important. Are you prepared to kind of preserve and not wreck that? And then you negotiate the price within an umbrella of a funding envelope. And again, this is why we're suggesting a year transition to work out exactly the details you're asking. We need to work it out, because what we've learned over four years is important, and there are several things we learned that need to be adjusted moving forward.
In the Kootenays, David Zander? No.
David Zander.
Zander. They have it in the Kootenays, and they have big ranches there, and I know that we only, we live on, we live on this piece of property, and anytime that we can, I can be funded by, funded by the public to be more of a steward on my farm, then that's a positive thing, because it's just not to look at. You have to, you have to do it on your, on your piece of property, whether you're a farmer or not. Well, I'm just saying, it's a program that, that I think is, I think that with environment, with sustainable, words like sustainability and environmental and all that sort of stuff, it's going more and more important. You just, I fully support putting the $21,000 into the growing farm. LSS is going to have students there now, and, and my two boys to get in, they have to go to Agassi, they're on a program, but they have to leave, to go to Agassi all week this week, anyhow, to get an education on farming and that sort of thing, whereas now we're, at least it's the tip of the iceberg. Let's, it's experimental. Thank you for your time. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you very much for coming. I also have been on one of the tours, and it was really quite fascinating. If you go there and you have to consider all of the complications, if you're on a farm and you're trying to, in good faith, work your farm, and you have issues around the water courses, and you're trying to get rid of noxious weeds, it can be quite a challenge. And I know it's really arduous sometimes to try and take those weeds out, and sometimes people want to do the, to expedite at New Chemicals, which of course is really very problematic for the aquatic life and everybody else downstream. So I also agree with Counselor Davis's, this is a really critical program, and I do recognize that other communities have also sought to try and find what's a sweet spot for levy across their area, because they know people care about the environment, but the degree to which we're all impacted differently could maybe make somewhat of a difference. So one of the things, and I think it's referred to in the end of your recommendation, is this idea that there's quantifiable data of some type that you can point to at the end of the project, because I think what people are looking for is some way to measure how much their money being invested, along with everybody else's, is making a difference that's observable, you know, so like water testing and things like that. I know other agencies are also keeping an eye on what we're doing, especially around Bertrand Creek, so they're out there doing their thing. But taxing, yeah, go ahead.
What was your question, though?
Oh, okay. Yeah, these are comments leading up to my question. So I'm wondering if your group, so I can see how these funds could be utilized, but have you ever considered working with other levels of government for tax incentives for farmers to do this, rather than collecting it from the local community, trying to find a way to work through the Ministry of Agriculture, for example, if you're just looking at riparian areas on farms, and giving the individual some kind of tax credit for doing the right thing?
If you're asking me about taxes or our group, we never did any analysis of that. But you may or may not know, there is the Environmental Farm Plan Program, which is supported by the federal and provincial governments, and delivered out of the Art Corp office in Abbotsford, and in that program, it provides funding for riparian enhancements. The limitation of accessing that program is the farm must be classified a farm and have a GST number. So some of our 11 farms have accessed those dollars, which is separate from the township dollars. We have done things like energy, engineering assessments on erosion on two farms, we've done Newton management plans, replacements of culverts. So we've done a series of projects using provincial and federal dollars. Now, in the course of the last couple of years, I've had discussions with particularly Ministry of Agriculture, because they're the lead in that, is that we needed to expand that program and somehow find a trigger to provide these funds for those properties that don't have FAR class and don't have GST. And now, whether they'll consider that or not, I'm not too sure, but if they can open that envelope of funding, which also is always a little limited, but still is access, and some of our farms have taken advantage of that. Now, when it comes to the federal government, I've tried to get more information through our MLA, Mary Polak, of what the federal government is, is prepared to do in terms of their species at risk legislation, which they've identified the Nuxac Dace in this creek as a species at risk, and they have a recovery plan legislated. But it's very difficult to get the details of what do they mean on that recovery plan. So one of our recommendations is in this transition year, that we have a very active dialogue program with the federal and provincial governments, because they have direct interest in these, this great protective Bertrand, and also the Salmon River and others. Exactly are they prepared to come to the table with their resources? And that's what the community survey said. We support this, but where the province and the federal government? Because these values go way beyond Langley, when you talk of species at risk, water quality going into the United States is a transboundary issue. So, and perhaps along the line, during the transition year, somebody might have to put their feet to the fire. I'm talking about the feds and the...
Okay, we do, we move along. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Counselor Ferguson, and then?
I appreciate you coming. I know that Carol Poulso's name was on, but you've done most of the talking. I certainly liked the blogo you still got going that was adopted, I don't know how many, a couple of years ago or so, as you guys kept on a really good job of keeping the Langley Sustainable Agriculture Foundation going. Your request, again, to, for the one, is that a one-time, or you want it sustainable over the years of the $10 per tax rule?
That would be a sustainable levy, and the two communities in the B C that have done that, that's the East Kootenays Regional District and the South Okanagan Regional District, it's a permanent levy. In the East Kootenays, they did it through a referendum that they, every five years, they go back to the people to see if they're still prepared to support that, and East Kootenays are 10 years into this program, and they've done that, and the public there has said that's a good thing, we like what you're doing, it's important, and they've agreed to it again. So it would be a sustainable source of funding.
I think it's a good idea. It's surprising we haven't, being an agricultural community, and you and I have, and others have talked about that, haven't done that in the past, but it's certainly something we could consider. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay. Counselor?
Yeah, thanks. I'm just going to just, Madam Clerk, declare a conflict of interest on this item, and the nature of the conflict is concentration of property ownership within downtown.
Thank you. All right, welcome here, and if you just identify yourself, and you'll have, you'll have the five minutes as defined by Mr., is that the previous speaker?
I won't take that long.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Ed Warzel, and I live at 9068 Nass Street. I'm here today representing the North Langley Truck Routing Committee, and to provide you with a petition that supports the full funding to reroute trucks in North Langley. I've been here, I have before you today a petition, I believe you have a copy, with 745 individuals supporting the funding for this project. I say funding because, as I'm sure you're aware, this, these concerns regarding truck traffic routes in North Langley were first raised before council in 2011. It's also worth noting that in 2016, council and TransLink approved the project, and that the issue remains unfunded. Since my last appearance before council on this topic, the North Langley Routing Committee has been assessing the barometer of support for this initiative in our community. In 2019, both the Fort Langley Community Association and the Fort Langley BIA indicated that in their annual surveys, truck rerouting remains the community's number-one concern. I am not here today to speak to you about why rerouting the trucks out of Fort Langley is a good idea, or about resident safety issues. I also won't be speaking to you about the growth of this area as a tourist hub, or that it is the envy of the greater Vancouver area, or the economic benefits that Fort Langley provides to the Township of Langley. None of this is necessary, because as stated earlier, rerouting of the trucks was already considered in support of a council in 2016. What I do want to draw your attention to are the 745 petitioners who support the immediate and full funding of this project. On the last few pages of this document, we have taken the liberty to attach all the comments that were received from the residents. The opinions there are there for you to review, but I still like to take the opportunity to highlight just some of the remarks that perhaps best encapsulate the overall commentary. The first one is, "I live here, my family lives here, my child and all children should feel safe. The current infrastructure doesn't adequately support truck traffic, and I've seen too many trucks cut over..." many trucks cut over curbs and sidewalks to make turns." The second quote is, "This change needs to happen in order for us to keep up with the current natural development of Langley. The current situation is dangerous and incongruent with the goals the council has stated publicly for the development of the community." And finally, "Trucks don't belong in Fort Langley. My daughter nearly got killed by a distracted truck driver who veered towards her, brushing his shoulder with a semi-truck and lumber load without even noticing." I am certain that every taxpayer is cognizant of the financial impact of projects such as this one. The funding to address this undertaking is very much overdue and relatively minor when balanced against safety and congestion concerns. With all the budget items being forwarded to council this year, we ask you to please consider the concerns of the inhabitants, taxpayers, and businesses of this community. Rerouting trucks from this area is strongly supported by the community and now requires community representatives to deliver the project by providing appropriate funding." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. There's no questions. It's an issue we're all well aware of, and I appreciate you bringing that forward to us again. Thank you. Okay, so next item on the agenda of the minutes of committees, we have H1 and H2. We'll start with H1, effect of a motion for the Agriculture Advisor Economic. Any move by Counsel Davis? Second or Counsel Coontz? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on the receipt. That's H1. Okay, I'll call the vote. Carries unanimously. And we move on to H2. And this is a recommended motion from the AAEEC. Counsel Whitmarsh moves, second by Counsel Richter. Is there a discussion? Counselor Davis?
Yes, I think that we have, in the, versing in the minutes, I'd just like to point out that the ACC, the ACC and the ECC want to be involved, to be part of the, looking at the terms of reference. And they want to be fully involved with the task force. So that's two positive things. And if you look on page five, where's page five? Sorry, you know what, I'm, on page five, if you look at the work program, the committee suggests the following possibility, new projects, future of farming task force, which is what we're voting on if it passes, and investigating the reason much of the farmland on the township is not being used, and review of the township bylaws that are detrimental to farming. And I believe that those can, I think Counselor Whitmarsh wanted, or had a, wanted to see in why we're not farming a lot of the farmland. So I think this, this all wrapped up into a task force will do quite nice. So I'd like to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counsel Long?
I'm a little confused then. Are they not going to form this task force amongst themselves? Are they asking us to? Looks like they're asking council to form one, but I mean-
They require council's endorsement to form the task force?
Well, yeah, perhaps, but I mean, so is this a task force made up of members of the AEE, no, AAEEC, or is it an external task force?
No, no, it's, that's why I brought that up, because it's the, the members of the committee want to be involved in it.
So, so there would be, okay, hang on, so, yeah, so task force, so there'll be a terms of reference which would come to council for approval. Right now, we're just authorizing the establishment of it, but prior, is that correct, Mr. Backen? There'd be terms of reference that would come? And then that would lay out the makeup of the, of the task force? I think it's too early right now to say who's on it or what the makeup is.
That's correct, because the next step would then be what the process would be for the engagement of members, and as Counselor Davis is suggesting, the task force would like to be part of that, or sorry, the committee would like to be part of that.
Part of it, yeah, so they may, but they-
I'm still confused. I mean, there isn't, there is policy, I believe, that covers advisory committees to form their own task forces. They don't have to have a, I mean, I'm just confused whether this is, they're asking permission to form their own task force within the committee, or are they asking council to form this broad base one of which they want to be part of?
Mr. Backen?
The, the, the committee has the ability to have work groups within its own parameters. This seems to be the larger sense, they seem to be suggesting there'd be a task force, a larger task force, that'll be looking at these initiatives and that would therefore would require council approval, and in addition would require terms of references and a selection criteria that appears they'd like to oversee.
It'll be external of the committee as well, it sounds like.
Yep. Riveted but external, correct.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson?
Oh, thank you, Worship. I just think this is a really good idea, and I think that at the time in which council reviews this and authorizes them, if we do going forward, we can make some more recommendations to maybe fill in some detail as to what council considers would be helpful to this process.
Thank you, Counsel Davis?
No, I just, in the, I just, also, the task force has Counsel Richter's motion that she put forth, but it says here, is, is a recommendation from the ACEC to council requesting council to establish a farming task force. That's what we did with the, what was it? The, the cannabis.
Very cannabis.
And with that, Counsel Long, they'll bring in other people, other commodities, all that sort of stuff in there. But they just, the sentiment from the committee was they wanted to, like, they wanted to be involved, and I, and it's their committee, and it's, that's great, that's so.
Okay, and so there will also be, but there will be a terms of reference coming to council. Is that correct, Mr. Backen? Yes, so that has to come to council for approval, so. Okay, I'm going to call a question on H2. I don't see any further discussion. You're on. You're in? Are you against it? Okay, carries unanimously. All right, other business, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I'll just move the, move the motion.
Is there a second or?
Second.
Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion?
Yeah, I just, I'd speak to it, but it's the-
Sure, go ahead.
My name is Mr. Mayor. I just want to highlight for council's, there was an email and a submission that went around to council outlining the province's process for feedback on some of their proposed changes, listening to feedback from the community on the, all over the province. But I want to highlight here that this is not an endorsement necessarily of small secondary residences within the ALR. If you actually look at the last three lines, the last three words, sorry, local government approval, there's a delegation potentially of authority such that we could define our own policies around that. But I think we solve, at least I do, certainly support the idea of having that authority come back to us from the province. Mr. Backen had one question, maybe that would help council, that if this process is underway now, with the assumption that they're probably moving forward with this amendment in some form, having started the process, we could potentially look at a, at a bylaw that would have to be approved by the ministry. We could start looking at that process now to prevent or regulate secondary suites if it's local government approval, rather than waiting for that amendment to be made and then given royal assent, and then now we're in this gap time period, in which we have to create a bylaw, send it for approval, and get it back, that, which is what happened to us on the cannabis issue. So I just want to highlight that for, for council's consideration as well. Unless you had a comment to clarify that, Mr. Backen? Thank you.
I think, yeah, I think you're right on there. However, it'd be difficult for us to create a bylaw without the governing legislation, but we could certainly start that dialogue with the ministry. And I believe in the ministry's, the memo I saw is that, yeah, that's the part of it is the local government approval. So, yeah, I hear what you're saying, we need to get the bylaw, but unfortunately, until we have the legislation to form the bylaw under, it's hard for us to form a bylaw. But I think we could work, work with the ministry and get that, sorry.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure, yeah.
Just to clarify whether that, you know, could we not, you know, if we understand that they might be heading in, or likely heading in the direction of small secondary residences within the ALR, support farming, couldn't we start a potential draft bylaw that would regulate exactly that, small secondary residences within the ALR, prior to the formal, you know, word-for-word legislation?
That's correct. We can start the process to develop a bylaw, but the bylaw could not be adopted till the legislative authority was there. So there would have to be a necessary gap, because I don't think we could submit it to the ministry until, for their approval, until after they had actually passed their regulation or whatever it may be, but we could certainly could start the work program.
And I would love to hear from other members of council on a potential process to start gathering the communities and council's opinion on what that regulation might look like in theory. Thanks.
Thanks. Counsel Long?
Yeah, back in November, you, you wrote a letter to the, to the ALR, and they responded. And so we've, I think we've already started the, you know, this initiative, which is great, so here we are continuing, I suppose. So what next steps would be proposed? To write again, now, well, now they have this public information thing, which I think has happened already, or is happening as we speak.
Worship, I think the motion actually expresses its support and as well provides the, I guess, commentary to staff to be, it would be prudent to start the process to look at what the implications of this actually means.
Okay, well, I'll just refer to staff and council to that letter of November 27th, because I guess it would be continuation of what we started already through the Heritage Advisory Council Committee.
That's right, yeah. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'm, got a couple of questions about this with regards to the material submitted in section I, one. Page one, it sets out three context factors. And the last context factor, reunify the ALR as a single zone. My question is, if we send approval in on this one, are we de facto agreeing with the other two at the same time? Because if that's the case, I don't support ALR as a single zone, and I think that whole thing needs to get referred to CPC for a more fulsome discussion.
Mr. Backen?
Worship, it's a bit like our other processes, we would not be acquiescing to the other points, we'd be very specific in terms of our submission. That being said, the lack of specificity in terms of adopting their previous position sometimes means that they reject our bylaws, so that's the, the challenge in these circumstances. Thank you.
So, just as a follow-up then, if I may, Mr. Mayor, this does not, I know we're in a very lengthy and have been discussions with the, with Ministry of Agriculture. This is not likely to support that apple cart, or to upset that apple card, is it?
It will likely be-
In terms of running any discussions off-rail?
I don't think it'll take anything off, off-rail. I think it would be received, the communication would be received positively. The bylaw would be another matter, depending upon, I guess, our history with them at that point, and that may lead to the approach that they would not want to endorse such a bylaw until we did agree to the larger one-zone policy.
Thank you. I need a motion to extend, I think, I don't know what's coming up, another business, but we've tried for 6:15, if I can have a motion.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Woodward, second by Counsel Davis. All those in favor, show hands, opposed, carried. Thank you. Carry on, Counsel Ferguson?
Thank you. Sounds like the ALC Land Commission and their counterparts are working on a number of things over the next little, last little while, looking at monster homes and agriculture uses and things like that. This, you know, it's the last page, page four, you know, they're talking about the feedback at this point in time, it's, you know, it's a local, for local government approval, but nothing is a final decision according to this document, and the document is also a policy direction and development for guidance document only, and I guess they're getting more feedback from other organizations, and they have a technical review, ALC, Ministry, Municipal Affairs, Housing Union, and a few others. I mean, it looks like there's going to be some more work go into it until April the 17th, so I look forward to more dialogue on this. While I'm at it, Mayor Braun from the city of Abbotsford mentioned something about, at our UDI function a few weeks ago, something about the ALC coming up with new direction with, is it for industrial uses? Does that hit the table, if I may, through the chair?
We haven't heard anything of it.
Yeah, he just mentioned it for there. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Davis?
I'll be brief. I think Counsel Ferguson just mentioned next steps, nothing in this paper should be considered as a final document. So I know that they have, is this the third time? Is it the third time they've revived this, or is it the second time, or third? This will be the fourth? Does anybody know that? No. Well, they revived it 10 minutes, an hour after they first put it out, and then they revived it anyhow. Okay, doesn't matter. It's in, in here, they've got so many things that support agriculture. And the way I look at this is, you know, they, they asked, they ask in here, it's purpose to inform interested parties and to assist. This isn't, I, this is not what you were just talking about, I think it was Counsel Richter, that this is new, that, do we have input on this as a township? No, this is for farmers, and, this is for farmers, and they had participants, the ministry will also consider how, okay, so this was for participants. So we, when, how can we get the word out that we, we want to be participants? I guess we could, you, farmers could go ahead, but there's no, no way that we can have somebody at the table and put our two bits in.
On the consultation, is there a consultation, whether they're reaching out, or is this, this is all they're asking for, is this?
As referenced in the document, it wasn't anticipated local government would be involved. I suppose we could be, but we'd have to then have some time to develop our, our position, work with council, make the submissions, and I suspect they'd rather just see that in writing.
This is kind of reverting back to where we already had allowance for second dwelling on agricultural land, for some zones for farm help and for family, but other zones it was just second dwellings. But at least they're coming back a little bit, which is certainly good for agriculture.
It's scary. Well, it, it's like, you know, or anyone else, family members, or farm workers, family members, or anyone else, if you double, I'm just talking now, if you double, every, we got 40,000 lots, I heard, and is this about farming?
Forty thousand properties in the township of Langley, some of them are farms.
Okay, but if they're on ALR-
Yeah, that's right.
They can, they need to be a farm.
Yeah.
Uh, it's pretty easy to be a farm. Wow, I gotta watch what I say there. Sorry.
It's easy to be a farm, it's hard to make money.
Yeah, that's right. So it can, we, we really, and now if we're in control, and we're all off council, and I've got, what's that? Anyhow, we have to have an agricultural-minded council to say, well, you're just making another home, you're just making another home, you're just making another home, because for anybody else to move on farms, sometimes they don't understand smells, sights, and noises and all that sort of stuff. Anyhow, so I, I, I'm leery, but I think the end is provided, there is local government approval, at least that complicates it from sliding in.
Yeah, well, yeah, just to clarify, local government approval doesn't necessarily mean council approval. It could be part of our process, which already existed for second dwellings anyways, they still had to come to, so to, anybody want to put a second dwelling on the agriculture land had to comply with the bylaws, and so there was local government approval. So I don't think this means council approval, it necessarily, it can be just local government approval, which is, does it comply with the zone, building permits, the rest of it, that's local government approval, so. And not necessarily everyone will come to council, every time someone puts a mobile home on their farm, I don't think we'll be having to-
I don't have to drive very far, and I can see a piece of property with three homes on it, four homes on it, and anyhow, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call a question on I-1. And carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Counsel Richter?
The LSAF recommendations, I would like to refer, number one, in its entirety, to a future CPC meeting, as it is a policy discussion that affects taxation.
Is there a second or, Counsel Anderson, second? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the referral for the delegation on the I-2.
And I would like, well, I guess you got a one too.
Okay, carries unanimously.
Okay, and then I'd like to make a motion that council authorize, number two, that the surplus of $21,000 be used for development of the Langley Learning Farm.
Okay, I think that can be done at this table, doesn't need to be referred. Moved by Counsel Richter, second by Counsel Davis, that the surplus funds go towards double, double-
Their, yeah, your farm.
Okay, and so moved, second, discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call a question on I-3.
And I see it's in Engineering's Hands, but I like their suggestion of having the consultant share the meeting, as well as including business owners as stakeholders. So how can we make that happen?
Mr. Backen, can I be direction to maybe involve the consultant on that?
We can request, I think it's Urban Systems, if I'm not mistaken. We can request they undertake that. Ultimately, they'd have to agree, likely would.
So we'll leave that as direction? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, Counsel Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Worship. Referring back to February 6, 2020, items distributed to council, I would like to refer item number 10 regarding the closures and detours as a result of recent precipitation events for report back to council, so we can find out about timelines and costs for remediation and works.
Okay, Mr. Backen, a memo, thank you. Counsel Davis?
You know, I, I hope I'm not doubling myself here. I just, a farmer had phoned from Glen Valley this morning. Did, is that been taking, it was regarding taking the rebutments out of Glen Valley. Did it...
Yeah, what's the condition of the roads in Glen Valley? You've had some concerns from farms and businesses there.
He wanted to come in with his John Deere tractor and just move it out of the way. But I told him, you better hang tough.
Yeah. Mrs. Wright?
Thank you, through your worship. The issue that remains at large, there's a volume of material on top of the slope that's still in danger of coming down. So for now, for precautionary methods, we're keeping the road closed.
It's for safety?
Priority, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Justice.
Counsel Davis, second.
Long.
Counsel Kuntz, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you.